This is a scheduled meeting of the Griggs County Commission. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to roll call. Avril Tranby.
Here.
Zorn.
Here.
Edlund is not here. Wakefield is present. Approval of the agenda. Pretty limited agenda here.
The only thing I might add to it is at that last, when the Association of Counties were here, they mentioned that the COVID funds, remember Sam? Corona's, how do you pronounce it?
Covid.
Yeah, COVID funds, that we have to, a lot of, it's gotta be for next, 2024, we gotta allocate it for next year, what we're using for designated. So before they, you know, sometime in the next few meetings, we had figured we were gonna pull with them for next year, right?
Mm-hmm.
That's just.
Yeah, they have to be allocated by 2024 and spent by 2025.
So something to look at for, I don't know, when you wanna do that, but maybe next meeting or something, you know, maybe.
Yeah, put it on the agenda for next.
Future business COVID funds.
For next meeting, yeah.
Okay. That's all I have.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Zorn to approve the agenda as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Avril. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Agenda approved. Have a look at the August 5th meeting minutes. When Abel will need a motion to approve, and I would hope dispense with the reading. No rush here. Take your time and read them.
I'll make a motion to approve, dispense with the reading.
We have a motion by Zorn to approve the August 5th meeting minutes and dispense with the reading. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second, I'll second now.
Second by Tranby. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. August 5th meeting minutes approved. Onto the bills. Sam, anything in there that we gotta look at?
Nope. Nope, the only thing that looks to be incorrect on this report is I am training my new deputy in, and she did a wonderful job with these. I just see that some of these have the August 16th date instead of the 19th. All of them will be the 19th, so that's the only thing on, on this report.
Who'd you hire, Sam?
Robin Williams, Lauren Wrestler's mom.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yep. Yep, so she had her first week last week, and she's doing very well.
Ensure forward, I see we have general insurance premiums that's over. Is that an in and out fund?
Nope, so I'll need to look at that insurance line item because there's two line items within that budget, and then I think it might have been taken out of the wrong account part of it and whatnot. So this one is for your vehicle insurance and your, like the inventory of the courthouse, that kind of insurance.
You have a look at that for next meeting?
Yep, yep.
Looks like we've got an $8,000 overage on a general election printing expense.
That's not, that election budget, you guys budget just one number for election, and then I split it out. So within that budget, I have it 100% under miscellaneous. But then for my own records to, to file that to this date, I break it out into my own. So that line item is not over, that budget isn't over just the line, individual items.
And then the other one is the county agent special fund.
That one is your in and out, that's his special fund where I wanna say it's for the 4-H. People pay into that and, and then he takes it out, but it's not, it's outside of the budget.
I think that's the only ones, right?
Thank you.
That we had a negative balance on it? Okay. Anything else on the bills?
I'll make a motion to approve the bill as presented.
Motion by Zorn to approve the bills as presented. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it.
Second by Avril. Any further discussion on the bills? Any further discussion? Barring no further discussion, we'll move on to a roll call vote. Aye to the positive, nay to the negative. Avril.
Aye.
Tranby.
Aye.
Zorn.
Aye.
Wakefield votes aye, bills approved. Sales ratio study. Not even sure what, where's.
That was supposed to, that was on, you guys asked to put that on for future business at the last meeting.
Yeah, so maybe, maybe just some informational, to clear up some, there seems to be some confusion on the dollar value of a mill and how that relates to the sales ratio study. And the sales ratio study, as you, as we know here, isn't used by the county. We do our equalization, we, we base valuations on the townships valuing their properties, not their, not their, not their heart property, but the buildings, the property. And then we rely on the cities to do the same. And then Griggs County's a little bit unusual. We don't have any county assessed property. Everything is, everything is assessed within the townships or the cities. So the sales ratio study is used by the state in their evaluation, in their equalization process. But there seems to be some hangup is the sale, that the sales ratio study is somehow exclusive of setting the value of a mill, which is not right. Most, most of the value of the mill is determined by the value of the agricultural land in Griggs County. So the small impact that, that the residential and the commercial property has on the value of a mill is negligible. The state sets it up to not release the value of a mill until after all the budgets are due, are due to be completed for a purpose, because they, the constitution says that we have to, we have to levy in dollars, not in mills. Because if you levy, if you levy in mills, you say, well, here's the mill value, now I can levy up to that dollar amount. So it, they tend then to levy the full amount that they have, that they're available under the mills, where if you levy in dollars, like you're supposed to, you just levy for what's needed, and then hopefully the number of mills available or the value of a mill will cover what you have, what you levied. So the state purposely holds back the value of a mill until after the deadline for all budgets, whether it be our budget, whether it be the city budgets, whether it be the, the school budgets, all budget, township budgets. All of them have passed the deadline before the state will release the value of a mill in each of the one of the counties. So the sales ratio study can be tied to the value of a mill, but it's not exclusive in producing the value of the mill. The value of the mill is going to be stated no matter what happens as far as the sales ratio study. So that's, there's been some misunderstanding on that, and I think some of the entities inquiring of the county on when the sales ratio study is gonna be done so they can get the value of the mill, and they are not tied together, and they're not, they're not supposed to be. So given that, I don't know if somebody had somebody, something in the sales ratio study they wanted to discuss, but that's where that stands.
So are we just pretty much on everything else? We're just waiting on the state for here on out then, or what?
We always have.
Well, that's what I mean. That's just, we, we, everything's done on our end, sent it in, everything else, we're just waiting on the state?
Yeah, we didn't have, we didn't have.
We haven't sent our sales ratio study in.
No, but I mean like our budgets and everything else, is what I'm saying.
No, they don't look at that.
Oh, they don't look at that?
But they do, but they do look at, they do look at our equalization, so they have valuations. So they have the valuation, so in that, in that essence, yes.
Okay.
And we don't use a sales ratio study, the, the the constitution, state constitution doesn't require us to use a sales ratio study. As you, you went through the equalization process, we looked at, here's what the townships valued their properties at, here's the cities values their properties at. At that point, we could have made changes to those. That was our point, that was our part of equalization. We could look at those values, we could have said, no, it looks like Dover's too high, and Ramus is too low, and we wanna bring them together. We didn't do that, we never have done that, because.
Cause we usually have the township decide themselves, not the county supervisors.
The closer, the closer to the, the closer to the actual property the people decide in, the better, right?
Yeah, we did.
Yeah, and, and, and so we've always left it up to the city, if you notice, the city's made changes, we approve the changes.
But before we, before we go by what the assessor does, you know.
And then that's really the way the system is supposed to be conducted, and so we've always, because can you imagine if, can you imagine if we as a commission's looked at Sverdrup's valuations and said, no, they're too high or too low, and send them back to Sverdrup? Sverdrup wouldn't be happy about that.
No, he wouldn't be, no.
No, so that's the point of this whole thing.
Well, the valuation of land is within a matter of 10 miles, can be so different.
Yeah, and, and we have no, we have no, now Scott can prob, Scott can probably be.
State, state takes care of the land.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, at one time, the land was done the same way that the residential and commercial property was done, across the kitchen table at the township. But now we have no say over the valuation of the land. The state has taken that over for how, what reason, I'm not, I'm not sure, but that is done by a calculation.
By, by.
NDSU, yeah, NDSU does it. And since its inception, through good times and through bad times, not once in Griggs County's history has that valuation ever decreased or stayed the same. And you can't tell me that sometime between when that went into its inception in, in the late 70s?
I don't know.
Until now, that there wasn't a time when land went down, cause I, I own land, I've seen land go down, but never once was the taxable value decreased. It holds the same, it holds the same with the sales ratio study. Not once has that sales ratio study produced a decrease in valuations of property. So there's, 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 there's evidence, of course, that those valuations are artificially high. The value of a mill, when I became commissioner, I believe, was $11,500.
Or is it now?
You guys have decreased.
Yeah, we've decreased our budget, yeah.
No, you've decreased the, the taxable value of residential and commercial things.
Yeah, individually, but not, not as a whole. The state always came in, state always came in and raised it.
There was one commerc, or year that, on the sales ratio study, it came in higher than the 90, so you guys did take it down to 90, and they allowed you to do that.
Yeah.
Because I think it's the, the threshold or whatever, they want you to meet the, the 90.
90%, yeah. No, what I'm saying is, I should have mis, misstated. The results of the sales ratio study have never decreased valuations. We have decreased valuations.
Yeah, yeah.
But, but anyway, so if you use, if you use the value of a mill, the, the value of a mill is supposed to compensate for inflation. A dollar's not worth as much, so a mill has to be worth more so that you, so that the county or the, the taxing entity still has the same buying value. Well, let, let's just say it was $11,500 back in 2012, and this is now at 22. That's 100% increase, which would, should indicate that inflation is up 100% in those 12 years. Well, we know that's not the case. Inflation in those 12 years has been, is up about 42%. So the process of equalization of the sales ratio study has overinflated the price of homes and properties in Griggs County. It hasn't, it's kept up with inflation plus increased it. So anyway, that's, when we start talking about the sales ratio study, we have to understand what all this entails, and what they're trying to do is trying to keep up with inflation so that a dollar spent now has the same, has the same buying power as a dollar spent 10 years later prior. And now, that's, that's an ongoing battle, but the, it, it's not, it's not getting any better, put it that way, because in a small community, we haven't seen the increased values to our properties, the actual increased values to our properties, because the job, the salaries haven't increased accordingly, according to the rest of the services. So we have the, we have the increase in services that they have in Fargo. I mean, the gasoline, the heating, all the different things have increased, but the salaries haven't increased like they have in other places. So what happens to our homes is, yeah, they, they don't, they don't receive the repairs and the upgrades. And when was the last time a new house was built, you know, how many new homes we average a year built in Griggs County? Not very many.
They've built a new, they're building one, new one in, in Griggs County this year.
Yeah, I mean, but it's, it's few and far between.
No, it's, it doesn't happen a whole lot.
Right. So, and with our aging population, the homes tend to not receive the upgrades, and, and so in actuality, they probably decrease in value. That's just the nature of these small counties. That's, it's been that way since their inception. Employee background checks.
So we kinda left that, the last time me and Jamie were supposed to get together and talk about that of which, which company we wanted to go, go with or whatever. Jamie and I have yet to be able to get together on, to discuss all this. Just kind of wondering what your guys' thoughts are on, on it all, and if you guys wanted to use a certain company with that. We do have some new people, my deputy, and then Extension's office is looking for a deputy too, so.
You're, yeah, you go on.
So we've had a couple of different people express concerns and about the hiring, and are we making sure that the people we hired are screened? So here's, here's how I see it. The county, the county commission, do you want the county commission involved in the hiring from, for the each individual departments? And that will receive from the departments, they'll say, no, we get to hire the employees, you guys stay out of it. You budget, you budget, you give us the money to budget. On the other hand, if, when someone gets hired that isn't, doesn't meet the specifications of the, of what others deem as responsible, then they want the county commission to step in and do something. So that, it's, can only be one way or the other. Do we want to be in charge of screening everybody that is hired? Or do we want to leave that responsibility up to the individual department heads, but then mandate that they go by a set of background checks and rules that will ensure that whoever they hire is of the quality that we need to have working with the public? That, that's the concern, is that somebody might be hired that has a criminal record or a questionable record, and then we are then promoting that person in the face, in the eyes of the public. And so something needs to be in place, so to.
But if it was to come to the commission or to the individual department, I think we'd have to have a background check regardless, wouldn't we? I mean, cause if it was left up to us five, and we didn't do a background check, you know, I mean, as far as just doing a hiring off of a, a application, I don't know that we're doing any justice, you know, cause you don't, I would, I would think that no matter who does the hiring, that there still should be a background check.
So given that, then, we need to, the state's attorneys, whoever, the, the law enforcement, we need to come up with, with a set of guidelines and that the, the people that are applying for these jobs need to meet, need to meet a minimum standard and, and not compensate to do the job. That's up to the, that's up to the department's heads. It's from a safety standpoint.
Yeah.
They need to be, meet a minimum. Is that, is that sound reasonable?
Criminal background check, is that what you're talking about?
Yes.
Not financial, but criminal.
Yes, yes. Now, now some, some of, some entities, whether it be a public entity or a commercial entity, will further include a extensive background check into the social media accounts of, of the people that are, that are the prospective applicants, because that gives, now, now you've put a subjective tone to the whole thing, but that gives a person hiring an insight into the personality and the work habits and the philosophy of the people that are going to be hired. That's a tougher one.
That's a fine line, you know, that one is.
Well, it isn't a fine line. As far as legality goes, once you put it out there on social media, it's, it's out.
No, I mean, but you're, you're dealing with other, you know, criminal backgrounds, that's more of an issue than, to me, it is.
It, it is, but we are, we are a right-to-work state, which means that, that anything can be, anything can be used as far as determining or ending employment. So it, it's what does this board want to do?
I would think we should at least set up to do a criminal.
Criminal one, yeah.
You know, as far as, I don't know that we need to go.
What are you, how would we do it with?
But then it's how far, like if it's a, you know, if they have a DUI on their record, is that, you know, how far do you want to be able to?
I'd say, I don't, you know, misdemeanors, depending on what it is, you know, cause a lot of people have misdemeanors, and they're not violent. It's, you know, felonies and assault and aggravated assault, stuff like that, that seem to get more, a little bit more concerned about, if you ask me, so.
It's, it's all in the eye of the beholder. Once you start, once you start classifying crimes to one person's, to one person, this is very serious, to the next person, it isn't, to this person, it is.
And there, there is circumstances that go around these, you know, offenses, criminal, you know, in one, in one person, it'd be different than the other.
But really that, you know, trying to explain, trying to explain that you were charged with robbery after you were charged with robbery, and here's the circumstances of it, doesn't make much sense, because the ultimate is you were charged with robbery.
Right, the judge and jury.
Yeah, that's it. It's, it's bang, that's over.
Yeah, once it's on paper, it's on paper.
So anyway, that's, I don't know which way to go, guys. I, that's why we're talking about it.
Well, we need to talk, you know, Jamie, next time, sit in and see what he thinks.
I can call him. He said he would be available by phone if we wanna call him, but that's totally up to you guys. Otherwise, I can put it on for next meeting.
No, let's, let's talk to him. Let's, let's have, take a five-minute break while she gets on the phone.
Alright. I'll make that motion for a minute.
Motion by Avril, take a five-minute break, we'll contact the state's attorney. Second by Zorn, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Back at 10:04. Back in session. We were discussing the employee background checks, and we wanted to have some input from the state's attorney. I believe we have the state's attorney Tennyson on the line, is that correct?
Yeah, hi, guys.
Hi, Jamie. So we were just discussing on what the commission's role should be in this. Do, do we want the commission involved with the actual hiring of, of these employees or the approval of the hiring of employees? What do we wanna include? Or do we wanna leave that to the individual departments with using their best judgment? Or do we want to put in place some guidelines as far as criminal background checks? Do we want to have that also? Do we wanna have a, somebody look at their social media history? Where, where do we need to be on this in order to ensure that the pub, and what we're ultimately trying to do is ensure public safety, that we're not exposing the public to a financial or any other personal risk by having an employee that, that could, that wasn't properly vetted and could expose, and could expose the public to those risks? So where, where do we need to be to be to cover our butt on this more, more, and, and to protect the public?
I, I think the commission, I guess my opinion is if we're gonna do it, I think there should be data that's set across the board for everybody as far as background check or, if someone's financial history, whatever. But I, I think that at least the background check for, for criminality, I think, yeah, I think that there should be standard across the board. And the commission make the determination of what that's gonna be.
Is there like a standard list that you can come up with, or something that's standard that most counties that we can go off of, or is that?
Yeah, I could, I could ask other counties how they, what they do or what they use as their guidelines. Yeah, I have no problem doing that. I think that's, I think that would be the right thing to do. You know, we're, everybody has some access to some sensitive information, I think, about citizens, and we wanna make sure that, that we're doing right by the citizens.
So given, so given that, Jamie, what I see is the hurdles in that is, then we need to have a guidelines for acceptable and unacceptable behavior. Is, and the criminal background check, what is acceptable and what isn't? If we're gonna go down the path of securing information and the people that are in charge of the information, making sure that they keep it secured, what are the guidelines for that? We, we just, we just had one of those here in, in Griggs County. We, so that, that isn't something that's speculative, that happened. But it's easy to say, we gotta put a stop to that. It's harder to put the actual rules into place, and then it's really hard to make sure that those rules aren't subjective, that they're actually based on black and white. If, if you're on this side of the line, it's, it's a no-go. If you're on this side of the line, it's a go. And there's no, and there's no horse trading in between. And then secondly, if that's gonna be the case, there has to be an overs, there has to be oversight. So then, then it can't be just the, then it just can't be the, the person in charge of the department. They can make the decision, but it has to come before some kind of board in order to make the final determination, in my, in my estimation, because otherwise, there is no, there is no background check on the background checkers.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying.
But then it's like different, different jobs do different things. Like the road department, they do random drug tests. Because they're, you know, they're doing the, they have the, you're using the county's equipment, you know, in the auditor's office, we don't have that, you, you know, so it, then it's like.
Well, they're, the, the road department would be required by, by the DOT.
Yeah.
As far as hiring, as far as hiring though, I think the same set of rules would apply for, for their, yeah, they'll, they'll be involved in a drug test, which is required by the DOT. But as far as us hiring any position, I think the same set of rules should be in place, you know, for, of a background check for each and every employee of Griggs County.
Well, right. So, so I, we've already pointed out one of the, one of the problems with this right from the start is how do you assign different rules to different entities? I'll guarantee you, someone listening to this meeting is gonna say, well, you mean the road department people can't use drugs? Have to be subject to drug test, but somebody at the courthouse can? Uh, that's, I mean, right, right there, you raised.
It could be basically one set of rules across the board regardless.
I understand what you're, what you're arguing. The only problem is with that is, is that's not, that, that's the way it is as of right now, even because of the DOT guidelines.
I, no, I, I'm, I'm not finding fault either way, Jamie. I'm just pointing out the obvious.
Right.
That if you have subjective rules for one entity and they're different than the other entity, but they're all under county control, it's pretty hard to justify how that happened.
No, that there's, I mean, I don't know about your office, but anyways, other county employees that drive county vehicles, stuff like that too. It's not just the road department.
Well, it's the sheriff's office, you know, county agent.
Is, yeah, I mean, is.
But then the county agent works with children too, so then it's like the diff, you know?
Yeah, I know, I know, I get what you're saying.
There's more than, there's, like, there's more than one department doing.
So, like.
Doing just one set of things.
Like I was thinking, you know, with the school, the school does their background check, like we could, you know, just take their guidelines and then use that. But it's all of them are working with children. They're, you know, they've kind of got the same, where here at the courthouse, it's diff, you know, law enforcement, you know, road department, office, county agent.
Still working with the public.
I, I guess just to, just to make it simpler, there are other counties, I, I mean, this, we're not reinventing the wheel here. Um, there are other counties that have HR departments that have specifically gone through, that have specifically gone through hiring processes, so I guess I can contact them and see what they do and, um, how we can make it easy for us and follow some guidelines or get some guidelines to follow at least.
Yeah, I think that would be best.
Is there, Jamie, is there certain agencies that people go through all the time?
Yeah, there, I mean, there are hiring agencies that specifically do this kind of thing.
No, I think his question was, uh, as, maybe not agencies, or, or, or companies that, that, that do the background check.
Right, right, yeah, and that's what I'm, that's what I mean.
Is that right?
There are agencies that specifically do this kind of thing, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, obviously, the, uh, the sheriff's department would have access to that, correct?
The service department would, well typically, usually, I guess in, in my experience is that um, the sheriff's department wouldn't do the background check. It would actually, it would be a third, third party that the county would contract with to do that background check. That way, that way the sheriff is not involved with it and they can do a fifty state background check. And, um, typically involves getting fingerprints and sending them off to this agency and they'll get it taken care of.
So then the, the, yeah, under that scenario, the final approval then is, is going to have to fall with the county commission?
Um, well, if we had a, I guess it'd be, really, I guess it, in, in most counties or a lot of counties, along the larger counties, it would, it falls within the HR department, I guess. It would fall within their guidelines, so they would give the, give the department had the yes or no if that person could be hired.
We don't have an HR department. I hope we don't have one.
Right. So it kind of, it kind of is, there's kind of a fine line of whether the commission again can say if they want to hire a person or not, because we have elected officials, so regardless of what the commission were to say, if we had background checks, if an elected official wanted, wanted to say, well, I won't first in any way, there's not a whole lot the commission could do.
If they failed the background check?
I mean, I would say that we have, we'll have to have a policy and have to have a, a, a line of what is tolerated behavior.
That, that, that's, that, that's been my whole point. We have to have a hard, black and white, yes or no checklist. If you fail one of the checked items on that list, you don't get hired. That's, that's the only way, because we can't be airing the prospective candidates, employees background check in a public meeting.
Right.
So we, we have, so we have to come up with a set of guidelines that are, are go or no go. And
Yeah.
Then, then that way, whoever, whoever is doing the hiring can present that checklist to us without a name on it and say, here was a background check and here was how it turned out, and the county commission can say, yep, you're correct. Go ahead, go ahead and move forward.
Let me do some checking into this as far as other county, how other counties handle this. And, um, I can have something for you guys at the next meeting.
I'll have to say, Jamie, that I, I don't, I don't find it comforting leaving our policies up to other counties' policies.
Well, I, I, I don't disagree with that. I just, I guess for me to have these have a little bit of direction to go, that would be helpful.
We're gonna have to come up with a list of acceptable and unacceptable crimes.
Well, yeah, and I think that's probably a, a good direction to go. I'll, like I said, I'll see how other counties handle it and I'll see if I can develop something and have it ready for next meetings.
All right, thank you. Any other questions, guys?
No, I'm good with that.
Okay, thank you, Jamie.
All right, thanks.
So, whatever you guys think about it for the next meeting, I, I, I don't know where to go with this.
But I think, I think it's gonna, I agree with what you said is that we can't err it, and I don't think we should.
No.
And, and, you know, in, but I think it has to be a set of rules, a hard line, you make it or don't.
Yep, and we don't even need, need to see the name of the applicant or anything. We just need to see the, what the results of the background check were. And that's, that would be our, that would be our involvement in it.
Yeah.
As far as, that's the way I see it. What, what else, which, there's a, there's really different ways to do this.
I think if we overcomplicate it.
Yeah, well, that's why, that's why I was kind of like mentioning to Jamie, I mean, at least you can get some kind of basic like a list or something he can come up with, and then we can make our adjustments from there if we need to.
With anything, you, before you decide how you're going to accomplish something, you need to decide on what the goal is. So what's the goal of this? Is this to strictly protect the public from somebody that might commit a felony against them? Is it protect the public from somebody that might jeopardize their privacy? Is it protect the public from some kind of financial loss? Where, what are the goals that we're trying, because without, without knowing where we're going, how do you get there? So that's the, the first thing is we need to determine what are we trying to accomplish?
Basically, uh, protect the public from anything that's, well, I guess any, any type of deal that can cause them harm, whether it's private data, security, financial security or something else.
You see the complexity?
Yeah, I get what you mean.
It seems simple to start with and it, and it, but in, in a public entity, it's not simple. At a private employer, it's simple. Uh, if you don't like somebody you hire a rod, or you don't like somebody you hire, you just say, this isn't working out.
Do you, you run background checks for your employees still?
We do, but.
Does criminal law, I guess, in rights?
No, it's far more complex than that, because, so we're, we're not only federal contractors, but we're at a high level, so we have to have high security clearances because we go on to air force bases, we go a bunch of different things. So, basically, we, we, we run, we have security checks on our people as if they're in the upper level of law enforcement is what happens. So any, a lot of things will disqualify them. I don't think we need to put.
Yeah, I'm just curious what you.
Yeah, that's, and, and that isn't me, that's because of the government, the federal contract, the federal contracting and and COVID made it a lot worse, and the department of, you know, and, and so then the firefighting industry was, was deemed essential to the national defense, so then every agency in the world gets involved in the thing, yeah.
We gotta, going into Canada, myself and my driver, we're in a pool, you could call it, and we're in, it's a company out of Nebraska, and they do a background check, they do drivers' checks, we do drug tests.
Yeah.
And this polled randomly, we're, you know, and as long as we have that and they can see it when we're going and out of Canada, we're, we're in it and it's current, we have, you know, it's a.
It's probably called Pers, the one you're in, same, same thing.
Same thing, so, um, and, and, uh, that, I've had guys that have applied and they, unfortunately, I mean, they've had, they've been delinquent in, um, child support.
Yeah.
They don't pass.
Yeah. There's, I, I, in, in our circumstance, there, there can be, um, a remark made in jest on social media that will disqualify, you, you know, it, it's, so you, you don't want to get to the point where nobody is
Right, right.
is qualified. You want to, you want to, you want a line somewhere, but that line's hard to, what, what a line for one person is, is different than the next person. And to one person, it's, that behavior is accept, acceptable to the next person, it isn't, and vice versa, so.
We'll see what Jamie comes up with, I guess, next time.
Yeah, al- ultimately, it's gonna have to be us that are, are gonna have to make a decision on it.
Put that on the agenda then.
Games of chance. Guys feel like going gambling, we can.
It's just a quilt raffle.
Quilt raffle, yeah.
Yeah, Mabel Lutheran Church every year does a quilt raffle, so this is their yearly.
Somebody want to approve that?
I'm in motion.
I'll second that.
The motion by Tranby to approve the Mabel Lutheran Church quilt raffle. And the second by Zorn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Raffle on. Old courtes, new courtes.
Nothing.
Any, have you heard anything on the cabin at all whatsoever?
Yeah, there's some issues going on there, um.
I'm not saying I don't, I don't want to kick it out of here, but it's just, any updates on what they want to do?
I'll do some more checking, but it's kind of stalled right now, but we might end up doing it ourselves, more of it, you know? It's a long story, that one. The people who want to finance it are, we'll see what happens, you know? We might end up, Marty has cut all the logs, so they're all there, you know, so he can, he's got, he actually has a quarbosoma in this place, seriously. To cut, to cut the logs.
So what, what, what wood is that thing made out of?
It's oak.
It is oak, okay, yeah.
Um, so, we had some issues, everyone bring public knowledge, but
Yep.
Um, some issues and some things, and I think we'll end up, Marty can do it, you know, with some help, easily, you know, and get it done. But the idea, of course, we proved to move it down there, of course, you know?
So the logs are there, I mean, I thought it was overboard. They had bore, they had bugs in them and that kind of thing, but I mean, every tree does.
Yeah, Marty cut some logs or oak south of my place, we're actually down in the river bottom of Bible Count. So I actually, they're actually at his place, you know, ready to be, ready to be done. So it's kind of a weird type of project, so. We'll see what happens. There's kind of still up in the area. We haven't forgotten about it, but it's still.
If they, if they take it down there, are they disassemble it, or are they gonna try and lift it?
Well, that, that's to be decided yet, we're not sure. They took, they've done measurements of it already and taken that out of it, so.
Are they gonna put on a slab, or they just build a little brick foundation?
Well, we put on a, like a cement slab, a flat slab, or we build a new, it'd be a new construction totally.
It's, yeah, it's, it's gonna be a replica.
Oh, I see, I thought they were gonna take this one, move it, and then do whatever we're gonna need.
You know, there's one up at Red Willow, an old, a log cabin.
Where's that at?
At Jacobson's, at the farmstead there, when you turn to go towards the Bible Count. It had, it had sliding on it and everything. When they took it all off, it was the original, original cabin when they homesteaded it way back in the eighteen hundreds. You probably, well, you probably didn't recognize it as a log cabin, but it is now, if you drive up there, you can. Now, of course, that's oak, of course, because, you know.
Anyway, that's where we stand on that one, so it's, it's still in the process of, we haven't forgotten about it yet.
And we're not, we, the county doesn't have any, that's just a given, yeah, we signed off on that, yeah. Okay, any other future business?
Future business, I have COVID funds and background checks. I just have COVID funds and background checks.
Yeah, I sound good with that.
Yeah, okay.
Motion by Tranby to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second that.
I'll have to say that meeting went very well. Thank you, guys. Meeting adjourned. Next meeting, this room, September ninth at nine thirty.